All right, we're going to have an order for the Lynn's zoning Board of Appeals meeting, scheduled for today, tonight, February 18th, 7:00 PM, Room 302. If we can have a roll call, please, of the members being present in tonight's meeting.
Member Gilwin?
Present.
Member Massey? Member Paez? She told me she should be absent. Member Christopher?
Yeah.
Member Maggio?
Present.
Member Olson?
Present.
Member Crowitz?
Present.
Member Lopez and Nindus?
Present.
All right, this is from the last meetings that we've had. We have a motion to accept the minutes or any of the discussions on the minute.
I make a motion to accept last week, last meetings minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll be moving first with some of the new cases. We're first going to be addressing case number 199, 105 Bayview Avenue.
105 Bayview Avenue, Lynn, Massachusetts, Castle Number 071683, Title 61. Petitioner Abel Vasquez, former U.S. View Terrace, Revere, Massachusetts, by his attorney, Daniel Cahill, CBA 10-099. To vary pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 10, the provisions of the City of Lynn's zoning ordinance to allow the conversion of a pre-existing conforming single-family dwelling into a non-conforming four-unit building in a general residence district, R2, with human occupancy below the first floor. Lot has 17,100 square feet of area, 15,000. It's required and will contain eight off-street parking spaces, four are required. The variance request requires the zoning board appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, little enforcement of provisions of ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial, or otherwise, to the petitioner, that desirably may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantial derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
We can have the petitioner come up and speak.
Yes.
Anything ever want?
For the record, my name is Dan Cahill. I'm an attorney here in Lynn at Cherry Tree Legal, and I'm joined by Hector Prito, who is the consultant on this project, as well as Abel Vasquez, who is the owner there. We have two microphones, so we'll have a duet for now.
What kind of consultant?
He's an consultant extraordinaire. Actually, he's been very... He's worked on a couple of projects. He helps with kind of the design of things and...
Architect?
Well, yeah, I'm an architectural designer.
Okay.
Yeah, I did the plans for Mr. Abel Vasquez.
I'm just going to pass out a doc set because I... I could be provided some electronically, but just so for today's purposes, we have some paper. Do we have enough papers?
You should, because I have my copy from...
Oh, that's good. That's down. Those two, gentlemen. So we'll start off by saying that Mr. Vasquez purchased this property nearly just over a year ago. It was a... It's currently a single-family home. It was a single-family home. You know, it's dilapidated state, not in great condition, and I think the intent initially was was able to kind of fix it up. Maybe, just, no, it's going to be like this today. Fix it up and maybe do a flip, but as you can see, it's kind of a unicorn of a site. This is located on Bayview. For those who know, it's the gigantic hill that everyone slides down during icy storms and smashes into another client of mine's house on 314 Western Ave. But it's been very lucrative, insurance claims. But this parcel, it's rare to see in the Highlands, a 17,000-plus-square-foot lot. It is... The house currently is well situated, not on the side, but in the middle of this large lot. So the intent of the owner and Hector was to try to emulate that single-family look, but add three units to it. It's an R2 district, but as many of you know, there's a mix of various uses in that area. And with the aesthetics, we were hoping again from this, from the kind of street, it would still look like that kind of one single-family look, but as you can see by the drawings and renderings, it's actually four units kind of in one. And it'll be, from basement to attic, it'll be siloed, and there'll be bedrooms in the base, one bedroom in the basement, which is why we need a variance to allow human occupancy below the first floor. So you walk in a unit, you'll have your kitchen, your living room right there. You'll go downstairs, there'll be a bedroom, and there's also on the second floor, two bedrooms. And then attic, there'll be some space for storage, because storage is very important, and if we don't have basements, well, we're going to need something for storage. There's plenty of parking, eight off-street parking spaces where required, zoning requires four. So there's ample in the rear. I think the parking in the rear also helps ensure that there's a buffer between the rear of the building, the living space, and people who live on the opposite side. There's a kind of a dead-end street that comes in there. There's zero intent to ever activate that dead-end street into Bayview. This kind of solidifies that. I know there's been concerns in the past, and some neighbors thinking that there'd be some kind of cut through or breakthrough. That is not the case at all. That will be maintained. Also, there's still plenty of green space, which is really great. There'll be grass on one side. There'll be one entrance to the right of the building, so one driveway in and out, and that'll get you to the lot in the back, where again, there's plenty of off-street parking, and well-lit, and they'll adhere to the landscaping requirements in the City of Lynn. They will adhere also to the inclusionary zoning that's before the City of Lynn. So 0.4 units would be somewhat, either one unit would be designated for an affordability deed restriction, or there'd be a payment into the trust fund, but we might have to do the deed restriction. And also, we'll go to the site plan. If this were to be approved today, we'd go to site plan review to talk about trash removal and also snow removal. And we have been to the development team, and they reviewed the project and had some great insight. We were approved from there, and we are here before you to answer questions or provide you with any other additional information.
Do we have any questions from the board members?
This might be the last use variance I also will be ever applying for if the zoning changes happen, so it's been fun. It's been a pleasure. Well, thank you all.
Trying to get it done before this...
I would never have done that.
Is there any about home grading?
Say grading or rating?
Rating.
Let me turn that over. The consultant, Hector?
So the only thing that's going to be graded is the parking in the back. Everything else is going to remain the same as far as the existing open space. It is on a hill, so when you see the site, it is sloped in the front quite a bit, probably more than 8%, but the open space that's been calculated, which is originally was 5,000 square feet, is less than that, so.
So the parking area, which is rated, that's where the elevation is going to go after running with the runoff?
Yeah, so it's going to be all contained into a drywall as far as the runoff goes, pitched towards the middle. It's actually on the engineer's survey plan.
Should we submit it?
So the narrow side of the house is still the side that's going to be facing the street?
Correct. And we'll look from the appearances, it'll still have the front porch. It looks like a single-family home from the street.
So the parking itself will be pitched towards the center, towards the drywall. We have two drywells on site, which is more than enough to contain stormwater and any runoff. Plus, all the existing open space that we have, the previous surface, will be maintained.
Okay, so is there a detail though, where they just restructured?
Yeah, we plan on using shade concrete, six footers. They're 1,000 gallons each. The calculated runoff, for example, for the parking is going to be 467 gallons, so it's more than enough.
You're not going to really change the runoff from the site compared to existing with those?
No, no. I mean, no, so we'll be adding front drains, so we'll make sure that anything that's running off the roof, for example, will now go into the drywall. So there'll be two drywalls, one in the parking lot, and then one to the side to get backup.
And then so if you keep in the existing building and then putting an addition on it?
On the back, correct, yeah. So I mean, I've walked the site multiple times. I went on rainy days, sunny days. It's beautiful, though. I mean, there's amazing views, the trees there are beautiful, so the plan and my intent as a designer was just to keep the character of the home. That way, you know, from all three sides of the street, you still see what's there now and just an addition at the back.
Trying to see here from the satellite imagery, it seems that there isn't currently any trees that would be impacted with the parking question that's being proposed.
That's correct. There's no trees in the back. There's just some trees on the side that will be maintained.
And at the site plan review, we will talk about landscaping. Just another note on the parking, obviously, that street is very dangerous to be parking on the street, so they'll be required to be parking in the lot in the back. And should there be a snow emergency, there's also a very long driveway for folks to not be parked on the street at all.
I've experienced that firsthand, getting in and out of my car, so.
I just did tonight.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
No, everybody.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else from the public in attendance to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody in favor that would like to speak? We will move with anybody from attendance that would like to speak against the petition.
My name is Andrew Sakonis, the owner of 111 Bayview Avenue, which is the house adjacent to what there, what exists now. I would like to have a concrete...
Here.
My main concern is, is the landscaping. Everything is pitched in every direction, and when it gets really wet, the water flows down into my house.
No, you're saying currently, that's what happens currently.
Currently, yes. The other thing is, is that the neighborhood is, you know, it's one and two family houses. Most of the houses have someone that is in charge. They're either owner occupied, or there's a management situation, and I have not heard anything of whether this will happen in this new residence. That's a concern. The neighborhood is extremely, strangely enough, very, very quiet, except for snowplows and, you know, fire engines and ambulances, but that's beside the point. There's not been no neighbor issues, you know, no, it's like I said, very quiet, and I'm just, I'm concerned whether this is going to bring new neighbors into the neighborhood that don't understand we live in a quiet neighborhood, and will it, will it continue being quiet? And will there be somebody there to make sure it stays quiet? And that's my, that's my main concern. I'm not really opposed to having this building, you know, fixed up, because it's, it's been abandoned, what, four years now? And, you know, I knew all the neighbors that were there before, and I used to mow their lawns and plow their, you know, sidewalks and everything else, and it's always been that type of neighborhood, and I would like to see that continue. The other thing is, is that during the four years of it being like this, whoever owned the property before dumped a lot of crap, kept on bringing in things and dumping it and dumping it and dumping it, and I finally got inspectional services to take a look at this, and at one time, I saw, I don't know what, it wasn't a rat, and if it was, it was the biggest one I've ever seen in my life. But I've lived in areas where the land has been moved, and the rodents come out of their areas, and that's one of my concerns. There's a neighbor who built an illegal addition to his, his house at 336 Western Avenue. He took down a lot of the hills, and my next-door neighbor was catching rats four, four at a time. So they're there, they're living in the ground, you know, everybody knows that, and I'm just, I'm concerned that someone's going to be aware that this could happen, and, you know, hopefully, we don't run into a problem. It's, you know, it's a nice-looking building, and I hope everything works out. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Anybody else wanting to speak against the petition? And I see that, were you going to address any of the...
Yeah, it's okay.
Yeah, well, I'm...
Sorry, but I'd like to thank the gentleman from 111 Bayview, and he raises some great points, and we have some answers for him. So as far as the management of the property, the owner does have a company that manages the properties that he owns, so this would be professionally managed. Also, we can certainly during the site plan review, and if any neighbors have any concerns, talk about vegetative barriers between the buildings and their lot lines. Be happy to do that. I think a nice encased vegetative barrier makes it easier for, well, more pleasant for all sides, right? Good neighbors, what, the safe fences make good neighbors. And with respect to rodents, obviously, that's a big issue. This construction will require a rodent control plan be submitted to the city, so there will be a plan in place to ensure that during the construction, rodents are mitigated, unless anyone knows of large amounts of cats that may be available to take care of some of the rodents in the area. Be very happy to cooperate with area folks. So I hope that answers some of the questions. I don't know if Hector has a little bit more.
Yeah, thank you for your concerns. To answer your question, there will be additional drywells actually towards your side, so we are required to contain all stormwater, proper drainage to be attached to the drywall. The owner actually does own a landscaping company as well, so.
Seagrass.
You go, Jim.
Seagrass. Everyone likes seagrass.
Yep.
The dumpster, well, technically dumpster, is there a service that comes in?
Well, it will be private pickup. As far as the dumpster size, I'll talk to the owner as far as what size.
The only thing I would like is that they make sure the dumpster is covered.
At site plan review, they'll, we kind of have the preliminary plans. At site plan, they usually tell us where DPW and ISD tells us where they kind of want some of those things, but they're always, nearly always covered.
Whatever, like the end there, come out with rain drawn, sheet off the site.
No, like a nice and pleasing and frequent pickup, so there's no stench in the summer months. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I hope that answered some of your questions.
So seeing none, anybody else who would like to speak against the petition? We'll be closing that portion, asking the board, under the wish of the board, entertaining any motions?
I move to approve this building with making sure, what do you call those, the, sorry? The drywells are included, you know, making sure the drainage is appropriate for the property, especially since it wasn't before, so that you suffer no more, to make sure that there is a rodent control plan in place.
Prior to construction.
Yeah, prior to construct, starting prior to construction, because once they start demoing, that's, you're right, that's when they're going to come out. So, and then a covered dumpster. Make sure the dumpster, whatever dumpsters are provided, are covered.
Second, our stipulations.
Yeah, stipulation, that's okay, thank you.
So the stipulation is going to be drainage, appropriate drainage for that area, a rodent control plan submitted prior to the construction, and a covered dumpster, okay?
And landscaping is appropriate.
Oh, landscaping is appropriate.
Yeah, I forgot to say that.
That's why I read it.
We have to motion, we have a second, and we have a roll, please.
Member Maggio?
Yes.
Stipulation.
Yes, with the stipulations.
Member Christopher?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes, with stipulations.
Member Crowitz?
Yes, with stipulation.
Member Lopez and Nindus?
Just to grant the stipulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now we'll be moving to another case foregoing other continued cases. Actually, the case number, it's 10-144 Mall Street. What do you refer to the change?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
Mall Street.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight Mall Street, Lynn, Massachusetts, Castle Number 05323301. Petitioner Habib Robbins, Trustee Sutton Street Realty Trust, Neobucks 323, Western, Massachusetts, by his attorney, Samuel A. Nafell, CBA 10-100. To vary, pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, the provisions of the City of Lynn's zoning ordinance to allow construction of a single-family dwelling on a 4,000-square-foot lot in the R4 district, with on-site parking as required in less than required frontage 20 feet, and less than the required, really, you know, 10 feet, a single-family home, acquire 10,000 square feet, 35 feet of frontage, 10 feet front sunback, seven and a half foot side setback, 15-foot rear side setback. The variance request requires the zoning board appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, and topography of such land or structures, especially affecting such land or structures, and not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, and little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance that involves substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirably may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without nullifying a substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
I'm Attorney Vitale. I represent Habib Ramadi, this is me. I wish Mr. Cowan was still with us, because I've always known it as Mall Street, but I think if you're all West Lynn, that street is Mall Street.
Now, is it wrong?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah. But in any event, it's 48, and Habib is the owner of the property. He acquired this property from the City of Lynn for valuable consideration, without restrictions, and he's owned it for several years, and up until recently, it's been available for parking. But this past year, there was a problem in the neighborhood with one of the individuals using it for parking, and so that was terminated to the satisfaction, I think, of ISD in the, in the parking department. And what he proposes now is what was there in the past, which was a, a single-family home. The lot is of irregular shape, but that really is a result of the Board of Appeals. I brought with me the plan that the Board of Appeals approved some time ago, which created two lots, a apartment house to the right and this single-family to the left. There was a building on it, and that's why I wanted to show you the plan, because you can compare that existing single-family at the time to what we propose. I think I have enough plans for everybody. And this was the, this is a record plan, which means it's included in our district of deeds, and you'll note in the bottom of the plan, it says variance was granted, and that's how the lot came to be, of its colony configuration and its colony dimensions. At the time the variance was granted, it had certain violations, which this proposal for you tonight does not. And let me show you so you could compare. This is the more recent lot plan that shows the proposed dwelling, which is a smaller home, a single-family. As you know, in the apartment house history, the least intensive use is a single-family dwelling. And that was what was there from the beginning of zoning in the city of Lynn, up until the time the building fell into disrepair. The city took the property for taxes, the open, we sold it. Habib owns other properties that went. He owns the five-story office building, a three-story office building on 319 Lynnway. He developed, why, this is the Sutton Street Realty Trust. He developed the three-unit condominium, which is now the home with the Hispanic Businessmen's Association. He developed that property in Lynn, and what he seeks is to build a, a single-family home, a smaller home than what was there, and the only variance we really seek that is within our control, your control, is the rear yard. I can't make the frontage any bigger. In fact, it is bigger than 20 feet, because there's a 10-foot right-of-way. In the apartment house district, the required frontage is 50 feet. If you know the character of that area, it's a one-way street with many apartment houses on it. This would be a single-family, and why I sought having a lesser rear yard was so that we could push the house back, propose the parking, which can be stacked, but further in, so it would be safe for vehicles exiting onto Mall Street as they came out of the property. As I say, this is the least intensive use, and as I've stated before you, when I've been before you, it's recognized law that every possible lane has to have at least one permitted use, and if you don't allow a use, then it's a hardship, because you denied all possible uses. So we tried one use, and we've abandoned that use with the encouragement of the parking department and the ISD. So now we seek in a residential neighborhood, the least intensive residential use, which is a small, single-family home. As I say, if you compare what was there in the past, what is there now, and with respect to the relief we really need, it's the rear yard, and the reason we did that is to make it safer for vehicles to exit onto what I call Mall Street. I'd be glad to answer any questions any member may have.
How many square feet is the house?
Excuse me?
How many square feet is the proposed dwelling?
It's, I did the calculation earlier, it's about 1,000, it's 23% of 4,000, I believe. I think it says on the plan 21%.
Oh, I didn't...
Down in the lower corner of the plot plan.
23%.
23%.
Oh, there it is. I'm sorry.
You're my math expert.
I'm sorry, I didn't see the note.
So, no, so it's the old goes into, so it's 23% of 4,000, which I think is about 1,029 something. I did do the calculation.
Any other questions from the members or board? Parking is going to be stacked.
So, so the egress out of the property, is it, does it, the curb cut line up with the right-of-way?
No, it's got 20 feet of frontage.
No, I'm talking about how vehicles exit the property. Is it, is it one big wide driveway access or?
Yeah, it's one big wide driveway access. Yeah, that, that right-of-way goes way back, and if you read very carefully, I don't know if it's on there on the plan, but it's on, certainly in the D, I think it is on the plan. It says to be used for passage, utilities. It was really to get to the rear house, but obviously, it's available to drive over, so that's why I suggested that the frontage is actually more than the 20 feet, but that's wide open, yes.
I mean, certainly the layout of this house is much better than what was there before. It fits it nicer.
Well, Habib, I showed Habib a few houses, and he said he wanted to do one better than what I had shown him, so that was a good thing.
Are there stairs in the front door? How do they get out into the corner?
There are two sets, yeah. I asked the same question. That little bump out on the right-hand side, that's a stairwell. There's a front door, which you can see, if you look where the 18 is on the block plan, that's the front door, and then if you look at the back, which is 28, and there's a little space, that's a slider door to the rear. So there's actually three doorways.
Was there like a little stoop there, or is it that ground level?
On the, on the front side... On, on the, on the front side, yes.
But I just kind of note that it doesn't compare with the, with the parking space.
No.
So it just comes out a couple of feet, is there a platform and then?
Yeah, it's just, no, and that's why we've got this other stairway to the side.
Here's here, I was going to look around at the. Side setbacks and back setbacks, is this all going to be asphalt, is there going to be any green?
I was asking them before we just came over here, is there some way I could put the parking underneath the building and make it cost-effective? Because I want to have more green space. Personal goal is to have as much green space as possible. I know it's going to be tough over there, but I'll try to do that to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Any other questions?
All of the setbacks are met on each, all the sides, all the setbacks for the building?
The Board of Appeals vary more than what we need to really in the past. One thing I can change is that it's only seven feet on the right-hand side, because that's how they capped up the lot to be a parking house. But with respect to, we, we need seven and a half feet, we need the ten-foot setback. The only thing we really don't need is the rear yard, is condominium parking lot to the rear. When I talk with the architect and she said, we thought we could gain more and make it work better if we push the house back. And then forward the people, the he's a back, you know. And so the only move leaving me is the five feet that we don't have with the rear yard. But we need seven and a half, ten feet setback, we need the white concrete, we need all the other dimensions.
What does the abutting parking lot look like back there, is there a fence between this parcel and the?
There is a fence, yes. In fact, the abutting properties, I believe, are multi-unit dwellings.
All right. Thank you very much. If there's anybody else here who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Please do sit down, anybody else in favor of the petition?
You can sit down, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move to anybody against the petition. Anybody here attend us against the petition? If you please come forward, name and address.
Now, only a budding parcel. I think we're total, we're in favor of what Mr. Robbins wants to do. There's a channeling fence directly between the lot or buildings. And he said it's been parking, it's basically been a salvage yard and a dump ground for a contractor. We want some sort of a blockade fence put up white vinyl eight feet, so that we've got fourteen apartments, so that they don't have to live through Mr. Robbins' construction. I think that would be our only opposition.
Could it be a construction fence?
No, I want it to be permanent, permanent, non-ceeded, total, total privacy.
Well, I mean, a construction fence can have the green netting unit that's private.
No, it's, it's, it's already a very urban landscape. If he's going to put in a single-family home, we want that dressed up and for as nice as possible from a visibility standpoint for tenants.
I was just asking the question.
No, something permanent, something to the ground, because we've had rodent problems from his site in the past. So we're on the building, if you're looking at that to the left. I questioned that they have twenty feet of frontage, by the way, but that's not the point.
The surveyors.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, to the, to the left-hand side.
Oh, on the left-hand side, the condos?
Yeah, the apartments.
This one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, long that whole?
Hundred and two feet. Hundred and two feet, white, eight-foot white vinyl fence down the side, down the side.
On the other side, okay.
Other than that, we're fine with what Mr. Robbins wants to do.
Probably better than empty lot.
We like the empty lot, we're fine with that, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak again? Seeing that. What is the wish of the board and emotions?
Only to accept the petition with some type of acceptable fence that goes between the two parcels as a condition.
Second of motion.
I'd like to add another stip. I'd like to add as much green space as possible, I know that's what's in your mind, but we need to make sure that it's kind of in writing. Okay.
Three stipulations.
Three stipulations?
Wait, fence, the same thing here, okay, three stipulations.
Acceptable privacy fence between the neighbors.
You're okay with that?
And green space.
And I would, I would stipulate which neighbor? I'm sorry, what was your, what was the address of the other neighbor, where are you?
What's the address of the apartment?
There you are.
What's the?
Forty-six.
Forty-six, thank you.
Forty-six what?
Mall.
Mall Street. So we make sure they're, that, mail?
Mail?
M A L Street.
Tomato, tomato.
All right, then, let's go for a roll call on the motion, please.
Member Christopher?
Yes.
With the stipulations. Member Maggio with the stipulations?
Yes, with the stipulations.
Member Olson with the stipulations?
Yes, the grant with stipulations.
Member Crowe with the stipulations?
Yes, with the stipulation.
And Member Lopez Hernandez with the grant?
Yes, the grant with stipulations. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have done with slash Mall Street.
So we're going to give them nip. I guess we have to meet this again, we've probably met it once. Right, it's a continue, yes.
So now we're going to be moving with our continued case, we have case number one zero zero nine zero twenty-five Eighth Street. Attorney Lamont, can we waive the reading of the descriptions if we make a motion internally? All right, so we will be waiving the reading of the description, since we've already had this. And it's a continued case, so please, the petitioner of twenty-five Eighth Street, welcome to come.
Is the motion submitted, if you don't have it?
Does everybody have the?
Just put that back in if you're not.
Good evening to the zoning board, thank you for your patience with us on this matter. Attorney Martha Kukui, with me is my client, Carol Paul Strohne. We were here in December, and we're back today after the result of that hearing. We've tried, I think, to abide the answers and the compliance that was of concern to the board at the last hearing. It didn't matter, request that if you had other questions or concerns to let us know, I did have a chance to talk with the city council president. Ms. Strohne has already instituted a lot of the concerns, including the removal of waste, for instance. This is not a property that has a rodent problem, and I think Officer Poole will attest to that. We did request that the zoning board allow with whatever stipulations you require. Essentially a variance, although it's not a property variance or a special permit, whatever you think is appropriate. If you want to leave the decision of the board in place, in other words, that. The, the inspectors found that this was not an accepted use, and so therefore it was an unaccepted use. My position is the board has some choices here, if you are willing, with the appropriate stipulations, given that. The intent of the, the trust that this property is in, and Ms. Paul Strohne's efforts have been supported by the community. We don't, there are neighbors who object to it, there are neighbors who approve of it, who are in the petition that we filed with the original request. And so we're happy to answer any questions or provide any more details, any of the compliance with the rules we've signed the agreement. Should to be an interim foster care facility, we'll work with other shelters, there's three that have signed those agreements. Ms. Paul Strohne has agreed and read all the regulations pursuant to the state regulations. Think that the ability of the, the town certainly, should there be complaints or issues with it. To, to require her compliance with them is evident, so we would request that the zoning board allow for. This property with the appropriate sanctions to be permitted.
Thank you.
I have a question. Okay, so I noticed you've contracted with a poop company, a pickup company, okay?
Yes.
My question is, when we originally discussed the cats, the cats were not allowed outside, so I don't understand why you need poop company, the cats are moved out.
The cats are moved outside, but it's because of the litter.
He's doing the litter, is that the poop company is doing the litter?
Yes.
Or is he cleaning up outside?
No, just removal of the litter.
Yes.
So the generation of the waste and the content of services is for waste being generated inside the facility?
That is correct.
Once a week, for forty cats or twenty cats?
Twenty cats at most.
Yeah, the most twenty. And you're living there now?
Yeah.
You have physically moved. You cook your meals there, you have physically moved to that property.
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions.
I'm done, yeah.
All those ways that you have a contract with the removal company, where is the waste staged? Before they?
In the house.
Where is it, in the house? In other words, I would like to see it in a contained area, wherever that might be, so that any other animals, whether it be wildlife, does not get into that, because it could be a concern.
Well, it shouldn't be outside at all.
Yeah, so, so it's going to be contained with the roof. So I just want to know where, where it's actually being staged for them to come and take it away.
Her hearing is a little impaired, and so.
Not that much.
Yeah.
But it can stay inside until it's come to be removed.
It's, it's very clean.
Okay, so, so the, the waste will be staked within the building. And the poop away company will come, knock on the door.
Remove it from the home.
There's no, there's no cats outside.
No.
Cause a nuisance to this area.
No, no. For the cat's safety and?
No food outside or baiting outside or anything like that.
No.
And then as far as, you got written agreement, so I assume those have to be renewed or carried on?
Every two years, yes.
I would think you would want to have a copy every time that's renewed, as long as it's up to date.
No, agreed, and, and we can do that with you and or Officer Poole, whoever you suggest. But I've suggested that's a good idea anyway, just to make sure that that's continued, and we certainly do that.
And, and basically, the licensed facilities, they maintain ownership of the animals. And keep fostering the animals, correct?
Well, at some stage, because of the nature of what she does, no one knows the animals until they go to the shelter. But yes, they will, and occasionally there are other shelters who will, if there's an overload.
Foster, define as foster.
Hmm.
She's not licensed, so she can't own the animal.
She doesn't.
So the ultimate owner is whoever is bringing the animal, has responsibility for that animal.
Yes, just the only question I want to make is that some of the animals come from officers in other communities and Lynn who pick them up. And who's got them as foster, but they don't say that they will go to one of those shelters.
They need to be assigned to a shelter.
Correct.
So each one of those entities, licensed entities, needs to keep a running list of who has those foster animals by law.
Yes.
So it was multiple, so it's a lot to keep track of, so my concern, Lynn's Animal Control Offices, should she not be here, something happened. They have to go into the home to rescue the animal, if somebody hasn't been there. Who is that animal to go to? So along with the license, probably, that running list should be provided to the Animal Control Office. So that those animals can go right back to their, their origin and not be burdens on, on the community.
And that's a fair request, in terms of making sure that the animals will be taken care of, that's, it's probably less formally done now, but that's what she does in the short run. Keep in mind, some of these are feral cats or cats that come from a horrible situation, so she has them, and then they go often to one of the three she's contracted with who will work with her. Or potentially, they may decide they want to give it to the MSPCA, for instance, or another shelter. And I understand your concern that there not be unaccounted for cats either before or after they are at her home.
There's paperwork that if somebody comes in.
Yes.
To the home, they know this cat belongs to this, this one goes here, this one goes here.
Yes.
The other thing was, the other thing is, this, this, you know, if this gets approved and so moved by the board. I think it's, would be contingent upon her as the applicant, and would not go necessarily with the property perpetuity. But she has certain credentials, she has certain licenses that don't automatically go as if you're buying a store or a business where it's not changed with the use. She is the use in this case.
Well, fair enough, and, and that's why I didn't originally suggest the variance, because I wasn't sure that the zoning board wanted it to run with the property. And so we will abide by whatever restriction you put on that, as a practical matter. That's why I don't know whether you're going to call it a permit or what you're calling it, but we are fine that it runs to her. In other words, if she ceases doing this, then she's not in compliance with the, the board. And so the, the use, whatever we call this, the permitted use would cease when she stops doing that, or if she doesn't renew her two-year licenses with the other shelters. But we are in agreement, and we're perfectly happy to agree that this variance use will run with the person as opposed to the property.
So this one other concern I have is the City of Lynn is going through a whole evaluation of zoning throughout the community. And I'm sure pets and agriculture and all that is being discussed. I know you put in a number of animals from here. I would request counsel, is there any discussion on number of animals yet that's come up through that?
From a zoning perspective, I have discussions with our health director, and I very much foresee that the health department may initiate some health regulations. And would let the cat block the number of animals that could be elevated at one time.
So we have, we don't have an idea what that, what would be?
It's had some internal discussions, the twenty, fifteen, twenty has been, has been discussed. I'm looking at one of the cities in town to try to be consistent with what other cities and towns do.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And, and we appreciate that, and in fact, the Board of Health had come when Inspector Poole came the first time around. Didn't have any issues other than a fire smoke detector that we fixed at the time, but we're certainly happy to comply with anything the Board of Health has concerns about.
Let me see, that there'll probably be an ordinance in the future, and probably coming forward through this process. They help when that happens, because you're already kind of doing things, so. It's almost like a pre-existing condition, I guess, at this point.
We are, we are making moves on here, I can see that, appreciate that.
And, and I know about the communities, I, I once lived in a community where it was a big problem, and they came up with a ordinance to, to address the situation. So they had a limit on the upper animals that could actually.
Yeah, no, fair enough, and that's why we, we have said we will limit right now till twenty, and that's the most at any given time, it's often less than that. So we would limit it to that, and appreciate if there's other, obviously, cats and dogs, those numbers will be different. Many of them are kittens, they're small, whatever, I don't, I don't mean to overstate it, but we will, we understand the reasons for a limit.
So I get, I'm, I'm comfortable with fifteen adult cats in there. Maybe up to five kittens until they're weaned off, and once they're weaned off, they would be considered adults.
Hmm.
That's my personal limit, I just wanted to make sure you weren't applying as a shelter, you're applying as a foster.
Absolutely.
Situation under the licenses of the. Situation under the licenses of the agencies you're working with, the foster being a problem.
That is correct, and that has always been our intention, frankly, to, and you may recall the original decision by Officer Poole said it's an unlicensed shelter, and after discussions, he actually changed his report to label that it was a foster home, so that is the basis on which we're going forward before you tonight.
Yeah, so then, you know, being concerned with nuisance is, I think you addressed that with your report here. The other issue with disposal of waste, not just as a budget issue, but it's a code of the city to not throw that waste.
Understood.
So that's enough of my question?
No, thank you.
Can I just ask the city attorney, is it, I'm going to ask you hypothetically, I'm sorry to do that, but let's say all the conditions in this document that was provided to us are in existence, and Inspection Services goes in and documents all of it, are we still of the opinion that that is not an acceptable use in that district? Or is it not? If the facts were changed, and this was what they came in on?
You have two petitions before you, as I understand it. One petition, my sister would make the document, that our zoning is not prohibited, regularly foster homes are being denied, if that's the case, the building department determining that they need to be at the variance within prayer. If we reject that petition, we would go with the variance request, and then there would be stipulations, so it is ultimately up to you whether the Board of Health feels that, based on the document, that our zoning is not addressed at all is correct, and if she is not correct, she has the backup secondary request for variance, and if it appears that she's going to have some stipulation going on that variance request, if that is the direction the Board wants to go.
And I would just respond, I understand why the Inspection Services and the city may want, not want, to deem it an accepted use, but I am comfortable if the Board is to say, we will allow the variance in this case with this person because of what she's agreed to for stipulations, so that you don't have every, not that I think it would happen, you don't want every house in Lynn full of cats presumably, but that may be the best way for the zoning board to go. That gives the inspectors what they're looking for, for the job they have to do, and I appreciate that, but also lets Ms. Paula Strong do what she is doing, which is a boon to the community and not detrimental in any way.
Yeah, I guess, so from my perspective, I do think what you wrote in the documents that you sent to the Board is different than what Inspection Services walked into over the summer. And I think that that, what you've proposed is certainly a benefit, you know, it gets you a lot closer, in my opinion, to a residential use that's acceptable in that zone. And I guess where I'm going with this is that I don't know that you even really need this Board to speak on that, if you meet the definition of a residential use. That's, so I don't, I don't know that you need a variance, and I also don't think that Inspector Poole was incorrect in the way he cited it when he went into the, into the house over the summer. Both things, I think, can be correct, and you can still go out and operate the way you've proposed to do it. And I guess that's why I'm interested in seeing what the city's opinion is on that, you know, is this a legal use, given the zoning that we have now, if it's operating in the way that it's been proposed? And that's sort of where I'm going with it. Because I don't want to step on ISD's toes.
Nor do we. They've been more than fair.
I don't want to have this Board have a different opinion about it than ISD does. That's, I do believe that they're in the best position to be making those calls.
And I don't disagree with that at all, and I think our position that the original decision can stand, we're not now saying overturn that, but say things have changed on the property in a way that doesn't raise any other issues with either the Board of Health or ISD, whether you call that a special permit or a variance is more your call than mine, but that seems to be the way, and ultimately, the city would be the answer to that, that if the Board would vote to do that for this one case here, for this person, given her history and whatever, then maybe everybody would be happy.
I do have a question for the attorney, although the city is looking at potentially this issue, and residents, you know, how many animals can you keep in the way, they may turn around and say six, dogs, cats, birds, whatever it might be, which may change what you're requesting.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't kind of rule on this, then suddenly you may go, you may be saying, oh, we're putting cats here, but then all of a sudden that ordinance gets nullified in the other days down the road, without having this process. I don't know.
I guess I'm fairly confident that if this Board were to be able to rule, you know, various laws, I think the Board of Health would have to fill in the gap and put some regulations in place. What's so, if you couldn't keep it tied to this, where putting the number of animals in a small or tall, it's probably, it should be much less than a lot of them, so there'd be a slight risk to that, but I don't know if the Board of Health would take any action unless it was avoided, and it was believed by the city officials, that if nothing was at this point, that this could pop up more often and be unregulated, doing a lot of the rest, which would be difficult for us to keep track of.
Right, and I know in other communities, they've done those formulas, and being an engineer by trade, I go, I do the math in my head, it's a much smaller number than what you're proposing for all of this, citing a residential area.
In size.
In size, yeah.
In size.
So it's sort of, neither, neither that, they're not concerned with the paperwork, doing the right thing in the neighborhood. If you're not doing that, then it becomes a public nuisance, I guess, that's him by the Board of Health.
I don't know, yeah, that's what I was going to ask, who monitors?
Once a nuisance, it may, it's not really, it's not, it's a, could be a health issue, but it also could be a zoning issue.
Probably the Board of Health generally has a great deal of discretion on that health regulations, it's very difficult to challenge the Board of Health regulations. I advise the city council, if there's something illegal, if you've been brought into the Board of Health because of the death threats, it's given to the Board of Health and that and state and town jurisdictions and likely this and health issues.
But I'd be interested in just hearing more from the audience, what their thoughts have for it.
Okay, so Christopher, are you done with your questions?
Um, yeah, I don't have any questions.
Any other questions or comments, or anybody else from the Board? Well, this, I just want a clarification, Attorney Lamont, if we do take any action and decide to vote, and depending on the way that's voted, I noted the conversation that we had about whatever it is that the Board decides for it to be tied to the person, not to the property, so it's not in perpetuity, with the stipulations, would that mechanism be through a variance? What would be calling this?
Would be a stipulation of the variance, of the variance would expire when the city's operating the foster.
Right, all right, thank you for that.
That was good, yeah.
And there aren't any other questions, then I think that we'll be moving with the rest of.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in attendance who would like to speak in favor of the petition?
In favor.
I see, and then we'll have you.
As far as I know, we have a bylaw, say in Sargis, you're allowed three dogs to a property, so if it's a two-family, they're allowed six dogs, basically. I don't know of any bylaws for the amount of cats, and that applies with fostering as well. Fosters, technically, there are no laws for people fostering animals, that, I mean, other than, I don't know, there's a mount, I don't know of any situations where you own a home and the city says, well, you're only allowed ten cats. I mean, if it's not written in the bylaws, then I don't know, can they enforce that as long as they're maintained to the house? That's, I'm not questioning anything. That would be, and the other part I wanted to say was, in case of an emergency, I have my own shelter, if there was a situation, you could put my name on that, and I could house how many cats she ever needs, I could house for her in that situation, should it arise.
So I have a question related to that, did you have an agreement by any chance with the owner, similar to the agreements that we had?
Agreement as far as what?
The signed agreements, no?
No, because the regulation refers to actual, not sort of the helpers that are in need to go, so that would have to be a stipulation.
Yeah, no, I just heard you guys throw that out, and I said, you know, you can put my name on that list if there was an emergency, the town of Sargis would help Carol, because she's helped us so many times, so.
During an emergency, you mentioned situation.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sir?
Your name and your address.
Um, I think you wanted to.
Yeah.
Just in favor, really, you need to tell us your name, Natasha Amaroso, I live at 20 Heath Court, Lynn, Mass. Really just in favor of Carol, because she's an amazing person, I know her well, her character is wonderful, what she's doing for her life's work is amazing. I grew up in a home, six dogs, six cats, a chinchilla, a pot-bellied pig, we had no waste issues, very clean, there was never any issues.
How much land did you have?
Um, probably a little more, but not a lot, but anyway, we could have worse neighbor, people in the neighborhood too, so I just wanted to say that what she's doing is cleaning up the community, helping other communities, taking feral and stray animals off the streets, so I'm in favor of it, and I think what she's doing is wonderful, and she's a great person, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Natasha?
Hi, my name's Nick Viscarello, I live in Revia, Mass. I've known Carol a long time, Carol puts everybody and everything aside to run for these animals. She's left family members at her dining room table, she's left turkeys in the oven, she's left water running in her sink to run out and get these animals. She's gone out at two, three, four, five o'clock in the morning, I talk to her every morning at six o'clock, and she's already out and about. She has saved so many animals, it's a shame, she gets calls, there's a cat got hit by a car, they want to shoot the cat, don't do it, I'm on my way, I'm on my way, she takes it, brings it to the vet, and the cat, the doctor didn't think the cat would ever walk another day, I used to go there every day, call this cat, talk to the cat, and finally he scooted right up to the front of the cage, and he walks, he runs, he plays, he's not paralyzed, he's, she's amazing, there should be more Carols in this world, second, third, fourth, I mean, she's the best, she is the best, I've gone to her house there, I've helped her, she's very clean, she's always with the litter, cleaning, feeding, she's wonderful, fresh water, sweeping, cleaning, spraying, pneumonia, this, she's, she's the best, she is the best, and she's saving God's creatures. We were here because of God, and these creatures are also here, just because they're any animal, they're better than people. I love them, I'm an animal lover, I would take care of anything, and she's the best, she is the best.
Anybody else who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, I spoke to you all before, I'm Sasha Gorgon, I'm the Animal Control Officer for Everett, I actually was called in by the state police last month, maybe, it was a Sunday, it was the first snowstorm we were getting, they thought the cat was dying, thought the cat was pregnant, the cat was lifeless, nobody would help in the City of Lynn, so state police called me, I brought it to Carol, and it walked again the next day, went to the vet, and she got it all a proper care. My animals from Everett are not going to her anymore, they're going to Ocean View, so she'll be taking my cats, so you don't have to worry about my Everett cats coming to her shelter, however, this was a Lynn cat, state police called in, Lynn Police did not assist, because, you know, it's a Sunday, nobody was around, I guess, and the cat actually walked again, I have all the videos on my phone, if you want to see them from the state police, the cat, and I can get you a police report as well. So I do think the City of Lynn probably needs to open their own shelter at some point, but until you do that, please allow her to save the cats, I mean, it's, there's been no complaints from her neighbors, let's just, I've been there a million times, let's just be real, we've all been there, so that's all I have to say, you know, state police in Lynn, for the City of Lynn needed me to pick up a cat, I have all the videos here, so that's it, thank you.
Yes, please. Miss, can we just sign your name and if you were naming?
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Lisa, I am the owner of Ocean View Kettle in Revia, I have been in business 21 years, I also work with your Animal Control, JR, as well, as a backup plan. I have known Carol, she started many years ago when my mom opened the business, since then, yes, we have changed, lots have changed, I am now state certified through EMDAR, Carol will never be left behind on any emergency or just in a daily, she has a backup, I am certified to help all the Animal Control Officers, I'm actually the city holding for 13 cities, I would be right there for Carol if she needed anything, whether it was a temporary holding, I do have a category, I am, as I said, EMDAR state approved to hold, she has an army that's not gonna let her fall, she's got too many people, she has saved many, many lives just in Revia, with a lot of elderly that have passed away in these communities that don't have family, and most of them, as they get older, they go from dogs to cats. She's been amazing, she's an asset, she's the voice to all these cats and animals that don't have a voice, she's their voice, you need her in your city, we need more Carols in every city, and she's not left alone, and she's got plenty of facilities that are approved to help her.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of the petition?
This is a big question from the city attorney, where's the number twenty cats from the gentleman's?
It came from their proposals.
Yeah.
It came from, no, the clients, the clients' proposal, fifteen to twenty, total fifteen to twenty cats, that's what's in her paperwork that she sent.
I was concerned.
That's what's been.
Anybody else?
My name's Laura Consigli, I'm one of the shelters that Carol has entered into agreements with, she's one of our foster people, I also work at the vet where she brings any sick or injured cats, so if there's anything housed, she does give us a call, she brings a cat up, she has my cell phone number, she has the vet's phone number as well, if there's any issues, but I, but I just want to let you know, I've known Carol a number of years, and she's always, she's a great person, and we've been working with her, I think probably for about like ten years now, being with her, being one of our foster people.
Could you just sign your? Thank you.
Anybody else?
In favor?
In favor?
Only once?
Only twice.
Can we just sign that we're in favor? We have the necessary.
No, we have to speak, or?
No.
No? All right, anybody else who would like to raise their hand?
We're ready to speak. Everybody come up and say that we're getting further.
Two point five minutes, please, while we have the signatures. Thank you very much, so we're gonna continue on with the hearing of the case before we move forward with anybody who would like to speak against the petition, I do have a few questions from my end before moving to that, and one of them is for the petitioner, so for the attorney, in relation to the agreements that were shared with us with the different centers, the gentleman, I believe, from Sargis who spoke previously, mentioned the being able to assist petitioner Paul Strong in relation to an emergency situation, like if he had to take some cats. Yeah, so does this type of agreement that we, that has already been signed with these entities, does it also take?
with many people, and should that be an issue, she has plenty of people to call.
Okay, but it's not formalized, or?
And it is not.
Okay. Thank you. The other question I had from my end, that's all for the petitioner, is for Attorney Lamanna, in terms of the variance, new ground that we're covering here. If we decide to move forward and it is granting a variance, outside of the stipulations that we might entertain in adopting, along with the acceptance of the motion, whatever other gray areas that might still be lingering around, does the board have to specify who, or is there a recommendation on who we might point to in order to take care of that gray space that might come from this decision?
I don't believe this board can defer that to another.
Okay.
Is there an assuming for areas, how the Board of Health would step in, thinking to justify it, by the rest of the gray areas? No, I don't think you can move it past that long. I think there's going to be a stipulation to the past, there's going to be, I don't witness any other witnesses that are on the books.
Okay, right, thank you, that's very helpful. So those are all my questions before jumping into anybody who would like to speak against anybody else with any other clarifying questions, then we will be moving to anybody here in attendance that would like to speak against the petition. But here against, point ones, all right, so.
I would like, I would like to ask Officer Poole to come up and speak.
We have another question.
I do, I just have a couple of questions, yeah. Well, mainly, my main question is, is that Attorney Copley has been speaking for you? I'd like you to speak for yourself.
I agree with everything Attorney Copley said.
You have?
Factually.
Okay.
There's no difference between changing the opinion for ISD, even the recent supplements submitted throughout the authorities, the issue of variance for its particular use.
Okay. Thank you. One more question, did you speak to any of the neighbors when you were there?
Yes.
And what did they have to say?
It was one complaint, I gave you a letter at the prior meeting, we got a back complaint.
Okay, thank you.
Nice, thank you. Any other questions or comments in port? And if not, then do we have any motions to entertain for this petition?
I would just like to ask a question. Short of a, for Attorney Copley, short of a variance with conditions or anything, I saw in your report that you submitted to the board, that you requested that the board incorporate a finding with your report, saying that the contemplated use, as you document in the report, is what you asked for. Would that be acceptable, short of a variance? I am a little uncomfortable with putting a variance on a parcel of property, because I do tend to think that those run with the land, that's how I understand them to work. I do think that you're, my personal opinion with the, with the conditions in the report is that that's a residential use. I'd be comfortable to make a finding, or propose a finding to the board, that this use is acceptable. Would that be acceptable to you, short of us voting on a variance?
It would be, but I'm not sure it would be acceptable to the, to the Inspection Services, frankly, that, that, in other words, I appreciate that Inspection Services wants to have the flexibility in other circumstances to put requirements on maybe a similar situation, whether it's dogs or, or something else. I'm not saying Inspection Services was wrong, it's probably a question of law as to whether it's an accepted use or not, but for their purposes and what they want to do, they're saying it's not listed as an accepted use in our ordinances, our regulations, and so therefore it's unaccepted. I, I'm fine with that, as long as Ms. Paul Strone is able to do what she's doing with the appropriate sanctions. So I am less concerned about the verbiage used, whether you call it a permit for her rather than a variance, I don't know the answer to that, and that's really more a question to my mind for the town, the city council, for the, to decide, the lawyers for the, for the city, as opposed to what we want to live with. This is unusual, right? This has not come before you every day. The variances, we don't have any maps and charts, or, you know, back grading and whatever. So I think that the zoning board can be flexible, I think we would be flexible, I think it's important that the inspector have the ability to do his job, the health board have the ability to do their job. So I, I think if the, if you are comfortable calling it a variance of this kind and putting these stipulations on it, that may be the best solution. How about a temporary variance? Would you do that?
If we did a temporary variance and then tied it back to the owner?
Can the temporary variance be tied to contingent on the successful, like, two-year reaffirmation of the agreements that right now have been presented as part of the?
Oh, that's a good idea.
... that they go back every two years, everybody gives, with submissions every two years of the appropriate agreements.
And that would, may resolve some of the issues, in particular, as long as the, if the decision stands that the sanctions imposed would be stayed during that period as well. In other words, that, if she's allowed to do this, she doesn't want to be cut down, but I don't have a problem with saying, do this for two years, to get it renewed, you have to come back with these conditions certified that they're in place and, and the new agreements, because people at the shelters could change. And so I think that's a reasonable way to go about that, doing this.
Does that?
Yeah, I just want to be considerate of the valid concerns that have been voiced.
Yeah, I think that that approach balances the community's concerns, as well as the petitioner's, you know, requests, and balance that out, that things will be run properly going forward, both to protect the city, protection of the owner and the animals that you're going to foster as well. So I think that, I'd be favorable for a motion with that stipulation, that we would grant a variance to operate the foster home with the agreement in place, come back when those, when those agreements expire to be renewed, and show that you have the same agreement in place going forward, as well as the other variants you requested.
And the new agreements would be the trigger for the variance to then be instituted for the next two years?
Yes.
That would, that makes sense to me.
Yeah. And I just want to say, you know, just say the obvious, no animals outside, no food outside, no waste outside, exposed outside as well.
Yes, and that, I think that's for our prior discussion.
... stated in your operating plan, the only other is paperwork, and as animals come in, there's a log of who's, who brought the animals in, and who's responsible, whether it's the shelter, or even if it's the animal control office, or at least, there's a record that attaches that, so our animal control office or Inspection Services can track down who they brought.
Yeah, no, that's fair enough, whether it's state police or what the source of it is, I think that's reasonable.
Anybody else have? You made some really good points. So, you make the motion, Mr. Poole?
Yes, I do.
All right, so I will second that, but I do want a very clear list of the stipulations that we're dealing with, at least for my sake. So what I'm seeing here is that one of the stipulations is a contingency that we have a set of three agreements, formal agreements, that are valid for two years, that would presumably be renewed every two years if the organization still agree with the petitioner and/or are still in existence or operating. So that's one stipulation. I think that a second stipulation would probably be the merit of this only being valid to the current owner, which is petitioner Polistro, so that's a second one in terms of ownership. Do we have any additional stipulations?
About the, you have about no food outside, no waste outside, an operational plan.
That sounds good, I have those on my notes.
And no animals outside.
And no animals, yep.
You don't want fostering vehicles.
With vehicles.
With the, the native vehicles inside. Referencing hearings, in hearings to the plans committed by the, who have been down the number of, maximum number.
Yeah. Everything in there. Yeah, everything in.
So that would be a stipulation, you're saying, would make that a stipulation, using, yeah, the full plans?
Yeah, using the report, their, what do they call it? The operating plan.
The winter.
Yeah, but how the petitioner will be operating and exploiting the agreement would be the second portion, which is the operating plan that was submitted.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
That as well.
The owner did sign the state compliance report, that's one of the exhibits.
Yep. All right. I'm just looking at something else, one second.
We have a.
I want to make sure you didn't, oh, what about the, you were talking about the 15 adults and five kittens.
So that would be a change from.
In the proposal.
I think a lot of this is covered, if you incorporate the report into the variance that was granting, I think a lot of that's covered. It's already covered. Even in compliance with the CMR entails that a lot of these things are already met. So if the petitioner, or the holder of the variance has compliance, then they are doing a lot of the things that we're talking about. Do you still feel comfortable with the stipulation? I'll go for, I have, I guess, an ideological difference, but I, I do agree with the spirit of it, and I'll be moving forward. All right, so.
So we have the temporary variance.
Temporary variance.
Temporary variance, that, that flags it, so you don't just.
Like the ownerships and.
Subject to the new rule.
Subject to the new rule every two years?
Yes, yeah, with the submittals of the same.
Submittal of.
Packet, offering.
Same packet.
Essentially, she's fostering under Sheldon's license.
Right.
So we have the motion, we have the stipulations, we have second, can we go into a roll call?
Sure. Remember Christopher?
Yes.
Remember Maggio?
Yes.
Remember Olson?
Yes, to grant the stipulations.
Remember Crowitz?
Yes, to grant the stipulation.
Remember Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant with stipulations. All right, that would be it, thank you. During the month of March, the city is hosting a process for rewriting the zoning code, and so we are expecting our planning department to do a presentation in March in one of our meetings, so if anybody's interested in learning about this initiative that hasn't been able to read about it, or take any other advantage, and wants to just see a PowerPoint slide and get up to date, then that can also happen here in this March, so stay tuned for the agendas upcoming, and that opportunity will also be here with the CBA, it's an announcement. And make a motion to postpone meeting? All right, motion to.